Hey, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Okamis Board of Education. Trustee Doxy, could you call the roll, please?
Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh. Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Leanie Schruth.
Here.
Jillian Win.
Here.
And I am here.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Okamis Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. There are two opportunities for public comment. Citizens who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items will have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting as well as near the end of the meeting. In-person individuals who wish to address the board must complete a blue form located with the agendas near the room entrance and present it to the board secretary prior to the start of the agenda item. Ritual participants must submit their name and address and a message to the chat box located in Zoom's meeting controls prior to the start of the agenda item. At the appropriate point in the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card or chat message, and that individual's microphone will be unmuted for their comments. We don't have any blue cards, no, okay, great. We're gonna start off with going to executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board adjourn to executive section session pursuant to section eight C of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations.
Moved by trustee Byrne, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. This does require a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Uh, yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Leanie Schruth.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Jillian Win.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Seven oh, we will adjourn to executive session. Okay, we are ready to reconvene. Thank you. I grew up in Boston, Massachusetts, so I'd be remiss if I didn't say Happy Saint Patrick's to everybody. And we actually need to call the roll as we reconvene. Secretary Doxy.
Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Leanie Schruth. Schruth. Jillian Win.
Here.
And I am here.
Okay, first up, we have a discussion about physics student trip.
Superintendent Hood. Yeah, if I may, just to our trustees, an apology and asking for some grace tonight in terms of we know we adopted a new board policy on field trips. And part of that policy requires three quotes to come forward from our from our teachers to have the board approve the trips. And we are working on implementing that. The teachers are aware, administration's aware. And we're asking for a little grace as those policies have come into play and changing our practices. We don't ever want to put the board in a position where the train has left the station before the before decisions are made. And we can see that we've done that some. So Dr. Kemsley and Principal Noble are working with their staffs to make sure they understand the new the new board policies. And tonight you'll see a little bit of some of the old practices in place as we learn to as we learn to adopt the new one. So please know it's never our intention to put the board in that position. And we will be doing better as we move forward. So just fun to, yeah.
Thank you for that. And I assume you're talking to us. I'm trying to remember if our policy has a timeline. For example, the Spanish trip, apparently the deadline was today, my son was told, and it hasn't been approved. So does our policy include a deadline? I can't remember.
The policy doesn't include a deadline, but really our intention is to have that come forth to you before before, again, we're collecting money and and doing all that with, yeah. And again, our teachers put a lot of effort into doing these trips, or it's a lot more work on their end. So we want to find the right balance of them, you know, getting the quotes and bringing the information to you. And we're so thankful for them for doing that work because it benefits our kids with amazing experiences. And we can do both. Value our teachers and their time and make sure our process is something that the board is comfortable with and then doesn't prevent our teachers from doing that great work, so. Great. And with that, I think we're ready for Mrs. Turner to come up and talk about the physics student trip. You're over here and we're looking just high level information about the trip. Did you did you share with me? Yes. I think you did, so. Slide mania, is that you?
That's me.
That's you. Okay, I'm bringing it up.
Do I have to do anything with this or is it already?
We'll just tell that's on, and you can just tell me when to go to the next slide. It'll be coming up behind you in a moment. Nathan's gonna flip it over.
Okay, so I've again, kind of what Superintendent Hood said. We started planning this about a year ago, so I think probably before the new board policy was in place. But we do have quotes for you, so that's good. Hoping to take my eleventh and twelfth grade physics students, as well as some of our engineering students to Cedar Point on May fifth. You go ahead and go to the next slide. So trip details, May fifth, we'll be leaving the high school parking lot at approximately six AM. Taking a couple of Blue Lakes charter buses down, Sandusky, spending the day at Cedar Point and then returning back here about 10 PM. The cost is approximately $110. Part of the additional cost, obviously, the bussing is very expensive for this. But also, we are going specifically on physics and math day, which is a very unique experience. Cedar Point's been running this for years. So a definite positive that the kids not only are gonna get to ride the rides, but they also have the opportunity to go into different workshops. There's worksheets that go along with it. So they can basically pick and choose things that they are interested in, continue with that. Transportation, like I mentioned, is from Blue Lakes. We did receive three different bids in between a bus availability cost and then also talking to the teachers down at Chippewa with their eighth grade trip. They suggested that was the best company to go to, and so that's what we chose. You can go to the next slide. So some things to kind of highlight about the physics and math, I kind of jumped ahead of myself a little bit, but there is special programming, live demonstrations. The kids can see things. There's gonna be stations set up all over Cedar Point. There's also workbooks available to them that have specific physics problems, so things that we can bring back with us. And then some Q and A sessions if they choose to attend those as well. You can go to the next slide as well. And then purpose and rationale, giving kids the ability to experience physics. So we talk about a lot of these concepts in class. We talk about kinematics, motion forces, getting to experience all that stuff. An interactive environment, we're getting out of the classroom, engagement and inspiration to spark their curiosity and then experiential learning. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. When they return, we will do a project. It's an amusement park project that I've done for several years where they actually get to choose a ride that they saw. Talk about the physics principles and then we build them and we create a whole little mini amusement park inside the classroom, which is messy, but wonderful when it's finished. And I think that's my last slide. Willow is there in her lab coat and goggles, always practicing safety. So any questions? I know there was one that was sent to me and I can answer that one about return time as well. So I know we're coming back at 10 PM and someone had asked if the students would be excused for the next day. They should be expected to be in class the next day. We figured sports programming, they return that late. Most of them are up much later than that, although we'd like them to go to bed earlier, but we figured, obviously, that's always, you know, parents can opt them out that next day and call in and excuse them, but they should be ready to go. They can take a nap back on the bus. So any other questions I can answer?
I said one question with the with the different prices for buses, and this is just to kind of help us learn of this policy. It kind of came out of equity and trying to lower costs and try, do you know, remember how much the difference was between the high and low?
I believe it was close to about 200 a bus, which originally we had three buses scheduled. We dropped it down to two. Just once we looked at how much the coaches held, we were like, we don't need that many more. But yeah, I don't know exactly. I have the quotes in my email I could send you, but I would say it was around 200. The other thing was Dean Transportation didn't have any available, so they didn't even provide us a cost because they said, sorry, we don't have any even a year in advance, so.
Right, and top of Blue Lakes was $400 less than.
Yeah, so total between the two buses, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else I can answer? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have another discussion about another student trip with the BPA.
Mrs. Murphy will be here to provide information regarding the BPA National Leadership Conference trip, so I'll bring that up. And we'll kind of do the same thing. Let's see here. Share my screen again.
Yeah, and you can, I guess, just show the slides. So the timelines of the board's needs and the timelines of the board's policy doesn't really coincide with the timelines with BPA. So I had to give board packet information last Thursday. I found out yesterday who qualifies to go to Nationals, and I have to have them registered by tomorrow or we forfeit our spots. So yeah, the timeline is, which was why you didn't have all the information in your board packet because you didn't have it either.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, so what, can you go back to this a little bit first? Thank you, sorry. So tell you a little bit about BPA, it's Business Professionals of America. I was approached during COVID to start the chapter. And I was gullible and said, sure. And here we are, this is my fifth year with BPA. It is a national association. And it has, basically, our our group here is three-pronged. We focus on community service, building community partnerships between local businesses and the high school students. And then the work split workplace skills assessment program, which is a series of competitions. Other BPAs around the state are a little bit more robust because it's part of their co-curricular CTE program. Here at Oakmills, we run it as a club after school. However, this year I have 123 members. And just this last weekend, Thursday through Sunday, I had 78 students in Grand Rapids competing at states. 122 competed at regionals. Of those, 78 qualified for states. Of those, 17, 18, I just found, I just got an email on one while we were sitting here, 18 have qualified for Nationals. So I have a global marketing team, a broadcast news production team, an economic research team, although they've decided not to attend. And then I have individuals who qualified in business law and ethics, ethics and professionalism, SQL database fundamentals, SQL, and health administration. And, yep, so who gets to go? Top six individuals in test events and top three teams and top three individuals in events where they have to perform before a live judge. So the 18 kids who qualified are part of that top six and top three. Also, the Ambassador Torch Award, if they complete that, that means that they have to complete at least 70 points in each of the six BPA service categories. So it's kind of like building a service resume. I do have five students who completed that top level award. But because they are super achievers, they're also part, those five students are part of the 17 who qualified, so. So I don't have any additionals that way. And then I do always offer it to seniors who are in good standing, who haven't qualified in another way. They haven't been able to attend Nationals at least once during their high school career. Um, let's see. In 2022, three students went to Dallas. 2023, six went to Anaheim. Last year, six went to Chicago. And I'm looking, I think, at 12 right now to attend Nationals. And at Nationals, they'll attend the opening ceremony, participate in a service project, compete in the event that they qualified in, that they placed in. They can compete in open events, which are like tests that everybody can take and attend the final award ceremony. All right, so you can go to the next slide. Cost is $1,500. The cost covers flights, ground transportation to and from the hotel and to and from an amusement park of their choice. A day at an amusement park of their choice. Right now, they are I think voting for Universal. Also, oh, the conference registration fee and the hotel fee, which is students staying in quad facilities, so double rooms, four to a room. This is the hotel and resort. It's kind of nice because it's all-inclusive and the conference is there as well, so we don't have to go outside at all until we go to Universal. Payment plan, I have to have $200 by Wednesday before we go out on spring break so that I can get flights. And then the remainder is due April 11. And, let's see. Oh, I have information up here for AP exams because a lot of my students are taking AP exams. And the seventh, eighth, and ninth are AP exam days. And so this is the process and how they take the makeup AP exams. And I just put that up there for students. I also let them know that in order to fly, they have to have a real ID or a passport because that law goes into effect, I believe, May 7th, the day we leave. Yep, the hotel's cashless. There's seven restaurants on site. I will take an Uber to a grocery store once we get there to pick up groceries so the kids are not having to pay $20 for a burger every time they're hungry for resort prices. And then this is the permission slip that parents have to sign and return to me before school tomorrow morning if they want to go. I arrange all the transportation. I don't go through a travel company because I don't have time. I've got to get those flights booked this week because the entire state of Michigan, everybody who qualified is also trying to get flights there. So I will book flights as quickly as possible. I looked at Spirit. Spirit has enough seats available right now, and so does Delta. Spirit is cheaper, but I'd rather take Delta because it tends to be more reliable and we get to have a carry-on bag with us instead of having to pay per bag and per seat. We are required to stay at this hotel. We cannot stay at any other hotel. So I can't get quotes for hotels. We have to stay there. So yeah, there really isn't a three-quote thing that I can bring to you because that's not the timeline that I have. And I do all the booking myself, and because of the timeline, I can't get a check cut from central office. It's about three weeks from request to check. So I put the whole thing on my credit card. The kids pay me. I keep copious receipts. And I have those all available for anyone to audit for all of the costs. Mr. Hood, I think you asked what the miscellaneous costs are over and above. Because the room is the room price, no matter how many kids are in it, if I have two kids in it or four kids in it, it's still $331 a room. So I just charge everyone a blanket $1,500. And that covers all of their costs. Plus, I have to have a chaperone for every 10 students. And that chaperone also has to be registered at the hotel and for the conference, and so I try to cover some of those costs as well. I think that's pretty much it. Right now, the second chaperone, if I do have more than 10 kids, will probably be Deborah Meister. She's a retired English teacher. She is already approved. Mrs. Walworth has already run her record. She's chaperoned states for us the last two years. She's also my mother, so she will probably be the second chaperone. And if not, then I will probably try to tap someone in my building. What questions do you have?
Questions, trustee Doxy.
Uh, thank you. Can you just share a little bit about the club? You said, I think, 122 members now. Is this like the most you've had, or do you see an increase in interest and participation?
There is an increase in interest, but it is impossible to manage that many kids. I actually tried to limit it to 100 kids. Eighty of them filled out the registration packet with all of the registration information online and signed all the waivers. Eighty of them paid the dues. It was not the same eighty, which is how I ended up with 122. So I'm gonna try to put a system in place next year where I can cut it off at 100 because it's just not manageable.
And when are they eligible to join the club? Ninth grade or ninth grade? Okay. And this is a question for Superintendent Hood. I think I heard Ms. Murphy mention about putting the expense on her own card. Is this typical for clubs? And maybe it's something we can look into.
No, it's not. We want to work with Ms. Murphy on that and come up with a way to make sure we can meet that need without her having to front the money so we can work with Executive Director Lance and come up with a plan.
Great. Yeah, it's not ideal. It's just, I have a 48-hour.
I understand, but that's a lot for you to do as an advisor.
Absolutely.
Appreciate. We would definitely be willing and able to come up with a plan.
Okay.
And I have to have a check to the hotel by April 16th, and I cannot guarantee that it would get there in the mail. And then we forfeit. They don't mess around.
Thank you.
I just jumped in on that point of that conversation because I know that there are other clubs that are in the same situation and I know their advisors or their what do you call advisor?
Advisor.
Would, you know, are having to do that. So it would be great if we had a policy or procedure.
Yeah, we can definitely work on that. If we, if we know about it, we can work with high school administration, work with staff and come up with a plan. We don't ever want staff to have to put, put that out, yeah.
The, every building has district credit cards and those credit cards, we can increase them. I could increase it right now in the next 30 seconds if I had to. And so I encourage you to work with your building office and every club advisor should work with their building office and we can, you know, make something work for them, so.
Thank you, Director Lance.
Yeah, you can make sure that information gets out to all those advisors because that is great. I don't know.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just a quick one. So totally understand your comment about the surface difference between Lake Spirit and Delta, about how much is the cost differential?
Um, I think it was well, because Spirit doesn't give you a true price, right? Until you put in all the information and then choose a bag and then choose a seat. So I don't know what the total price was. The base price, I believe, was $331. But that's without a bag and without a seat. The base price for Delta was $388. But again, I charge students $1,500 regardless of the cost of the flight.
Right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a report from our high school representative, Penelope.
Hi, thank you so much for having me today. And thank you for everyone. Thank you to everyone who was able to attend the collage concert on Friday. We love putting it together with all different types of music from our high school and ensembles to show you all. I was gonna report on BPA and the success that we had at states, which is unprecedented from this weekend, but more interest, that's great. 18 students qualifying for Nationals is amazing, so congratulations to all of them. And we're very proud. The Okamis archery team also competed in the NASP state tournament this weekend, and they did very well as well. And this includes high school students and middle school students. Most classes right now are wrapping up units. I'm very excited for spring break. The Okamis Outreach Annual Trip to Chicago is from the 22nd to the 29th this year. And that's for those of you who aren't familiar, providing childcare and education for single-parent homes as the parents are given access to resources throughout the time that the students are there. This is made possible by the bottle drive, which ran a couple of weeks ago, so thank you to everyone who donated. That club is very excited. The National Honor Society Annual Blood Drive is also coming up on April 11th. Reach out to an NHS member or go to Red Cross's webpage if anyone is interested in donating blood from the community. Touch of Class is also an annual charity luncheon that we run. It's run by the principal advisory board at the high school as well as the senior class, where we get a chance to serve the rest of the student body, usually food donated from local businesses. And so that's a very fun opportunity. We'll update you on where the funds are going this year. I don't think that's decided, but the fundraiser is in the works. And Will, Women in Leadership and Legacy, was able to visit Chippewa last Friday for a culture meeting, sharing cultures and women's evolution through them. So we always love connecting with the Chippewa students since the chapter was started there one or two years ago. And recent action events include visiting Central Edgewood and Bennett Woods for rock painting and childcare. The Meridian Senior Center for Tech Tuesday and helping run the Pi Day 5K. The library of the Okamis High School Library is hosting a fun marches reading month reading competition for students and staff as well, which includes opportunities for prizes from local businesses, including Baskin Robbins, Grant Travers, Savvy Sliders, Studio C, and Zep Zone, and that's based on the amount of books we're reading. And then there's also a fun slip called Get Caught Reading, and it's a teacher can write it out for a student if they get caught to earn prizes. And spring sports have also started their season at the end of this past week, so we look forward to watching the teams thrive this year. Any questions?
Could you, you mentioned Will. Could you just say what that stands for? And then also, like, how do you focus on the evolution of women through history and culture? Just talk a little bit more about how you decided what to focus on in that group?
Yeah, of course. Personally, I wasn't at the meeting. But I am a member of Will, which is Women in Leadership and Legacy. That was started, I think, my freshman year, so three years ago at the high school. And it's just a support. No, I won't minimize it to that. Will is a group which does many events such as meeting, experiencing guest speakers, going on field trips, such as to meet with the women's basketball team and coach and hear from her and do self-defense lessons and have just all different types of speakers come in. It's, it is a support group for women in the school. And the cultural meeting was when Will as a whole a decent amount goes to Chippewa to include them on meetings in the off week since Will meetings are every other week. And they replicated a meeting where members from individual cultures were presenting their culture and kind of like women's role through it throughout history and emphasizing growth and just
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Other questions for Penelope? Do you have a date for Touch of Class? Do you know what the date is?
Yeah, I guess I didn't say it. April 24th will be Touch of Class.
And collage that Penelope mentioned is online, and it was amazing. So if you didn't get a chance to go, I really recommend that you check it out online.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are welcome to stay or go, as you know. Thank you so much for your update. Okay, next we have a discussion move forward about third-party custodial contracts. Superintendent Hood?
Great. Director Leiber's gonna come up. I'm just putting Touch of Class on my calendar. And I'll share my screen. So Director Leiber's here this evening to talk to you about one of two paths for our custodial, our third-party custodial services. We have a couple of paths we could take. The path he's recommending to you tonight is a contract extension. If the board is not comfortable with the contract extension, we can go up to RFP and and get bids on a new custodial services proposal. But Director Leiber's gonna walk you through his recommendation and rationale why. Ryan, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, John. Go to the first slide or the second slide, I guess. Our current service provider is GRBS. Everybody gets it wrong. John's gotten it wrong several times.
All the time.
I know, it's not GBRS, it's GRBS, which stands for Grand Rapids Building Services. They've been our service provider for the last three years, responsible for evening cleaning inside all the buildings. The contract has a provision in it for a two-year extension. In summary, we've had some challenges with them due to staffing turnover, establishment of reasonable expectations. However, that's improved quite a bit. Relationships between GRBS staff and Okamis staff have been challenging, and that's more about who's responsible for what aspects of the custodial work that needs to be done. And they've shown a willingness to improve. We've actually improved our relationship with them quite a bit, and that has to do a lot with the management team they put in place in the district. It's been very helpful. Next slide. So contracting versus, oh, I changed that, sorry. Contracting or Okamis staff. So contracting has the benefit of cost savings. It's much cheaper than having an OPS team. It expands our resources. They have more knowledge of new methods and practices. They also have the ability to bring in additional people when needed, and we have had to take advantage of that. Also, they have plenty of subs available when they have call-ins as well. It transfers management, intensive duties. We do not have to have a team of managers, the staff at night. We don't need to do hirings. We don't need to do evaluations, all those things. Benefits of an Okamis staff, relationships. Our staff would be our staff. Staff would be more vested. They'd be part of our district community. We believe that we would have the, excuse me, the team for a longer duration than with the contractor. We'd have more consistent staff, we believe. It's not necessarily for sure. That's just kind of historically what the belief has been. Knowledge of facilities, direct supervision and control. Next slide. So contract extension versus an RFP. It allows OPS time to coordinate new builds Uh it allows OPS time to coordinate new builds with contract renewal. New buildings will have new challenges. There's new materials in those buildings. They're different spaces. In some cases, they're larger spaces. Uh it's just hard to predict those needs right now. Um an extension of the contract, more economical than reopening bids. If we go out to bid, it puts the entire contract back up for negotiation. With the extension, the contract remains basically the same. There's just a small fee for extending the contract, which we'll get into in a little bit. The current provider has been responsive to our feedback, willing to work with us. Our relationship with them has greatly improved. Like I said, their management team has turned over. We've had a much better time working with them. Far more responsive. They're really into it. They really want this. Um there's a lot of cliches I can use. But just overall, the attitude is greatly improved. Higher quality service with existing team versus new team. So. We've already started developing relationships. We have had GRBS people in our buildings for a very long time. We have seen some turnovers, but there's still a lot of um very common faces there. Training, knowledge of buildings, um. The GRBS team we have, especially the management team, they're starting to figure us out, figure our buildings out. Not all corners of the buildings get used the same. Like, for example, the areas around the gyms are used all school day and all afternoon. So even just the instinctiveness of. There's an hour gap after school between the first, you know, after school to the first practice. We should get over there and clean that up. So it looks good for the people coming at night, those kind of things. Uh improvements. They have made a lot of improvements. They've actually helped us improve. We. Our current arrangement is they use our cleaning products and our equipment. We have made some changes as we needed to replace products or equipment based on their recommendations. Those are things we just wouldn't know on our own, if that makes sense. We'd have to learn all the things they know and they do this professionally. So cost analysis, next. Um there's a slight incre- increase with the extension to adjust for the cost of labor and the Earn Sick Time Act. Oakmoss staff would be considerably more expensive. And that cost increase does not guarantee an increase in the quality of work. It may take years to find the right people. That's the key point. It will take a long time to find twenty to twenty-five people to hire for night work. It is very difficult. Why extend with GRBS? Um relationship developing, working with us to address concerns. Promoting ownership from students. They have programs to get students involved in helping to clean their school. It doesn't mean they're passing the buck on to the students. It just means. Being mindful of your school environment, cleaning up after yourself. We've all walked through the halls after school. There's papers and gloves and things everywhere. Just helping with that sort of thing. Developing routines to uh assist in success. Uh management has been responsive, positive references from other districts. The struggles we've had with GRBS are not exclusive to GRBS. No third-party cleaning service is perfect. Not even if we had our own staff, I wouldn't say it'd be perfect. We'd still have challenges. Um it's the most economical solution. It makes unknown known for budget planning. Um. And helps us with our timelines for the new buildings. Next slide. So the recommendation is to continue contract for night custodial, two-year contract extension with GRBS. Other, other items considered or other options considered but rejected, going to third-party bid, bringing all custodial in-house. Any questions?
Questions? Tracy Kepner?
Um, thank you.
Yeah.
Um so is the extension, would you do it yearly or you have to do it two years?
So two years. In working with them, they, they prefer two years. That was a kind of a sticking point with me, but their rationale is. They want the security of knowing they're gonna be able to keep that staff employed for two years versus one year. And that makes sense to us, too.
Yeah. Um and just one more question, just maybe more out of curiosity. So you talked about the high-use areas like the gym. So do they, those end up getting cleaned twice each night then?
It depends on the load. I mean, we just have basketball practices. It's not a big deal, but like when there's a high school basketball game. That's obviously a bigger thing. That was kind of one of my points emphasis when I started was. The areas and things that everybody sees. Not everybody sees the entire school at five PM or six PM or seven PM, but if there's a basketball game, if there's something going on. Anywhere else in the school, almost always, it's the same entrances being used for those events and everybody sees all that and it just. Gives a representation that we don't care about our buildings when we do.
Other questions? Tracy Burns?
Student said about things have uh improved, but what does that mean? Like? Things are being cleaned more in a more timely manner or things being cleaner? Like, can you just tell us?
Sorry, yeah, they have a cleaning schedule that they follow. I don't. So I wasn't here when this originally went into place with GRBS, but one of the things I learned right away was I don't think anybody understood what the schedule was. So when I started, we would get a lot of tickets about how. This didn't get cleaned, that didn't get cleaned. And it turned out what it really was is people were expecting things to happen on days that wasn't scheduled to happen. So we were, went, what did we do this summer, John? We went and we put together a whole list of. That whole schedule, we got feedback from staff about specific things. There's always things I don't know about how spaces get used, like cafeteria is get used different in every school. Auditoriums get used different in every school, like Chippewa very rarely uses theirs, Illinois uses theirs almost every day. So trying to learn those things, make sure the schedule we add makes sense. And then making sure that every single staff member knew when their specific spaces were getting cleaned. That helped kind of change the attitude and help get the relationship kind of back on track because everybody sort of obviously understand when things are gonna happen. Versus just assuming it should just get done every day, which was not always the case.
So clarifying expectations was part of that.
Yeah.
Both ways. I mean, it was one of my questions was, um do you have a sense of how staff feel about GRBS now?
There, there's positive and negative thoughts. Uh I see both sides of it. There's a belief that. An Oakmoss-only staff would be best. There are aspects to that I like. For example, we have one nighttime staff person at the high school now and his job is to basically just manage the events because there's always things going on there. The relationship those coaches and teachers have made with him has been invaluable. He understands their needs. He's there to support them and make us all look good, to be honest. Just put on a good show for the community. But there's just no guarantees. They're unknowns. Who knows what kind of applicants we would get if we went out to hire people. There's. I can't definitively say Oakmoss staff or some other contractor would be better. And I don't think anyone could.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, that, that sounds like, again, it's more expensive and you kind of laid out the reasons why you think that's not a good, where you're recommending to con- continue. My, my, my question was more just about like, what do you look at to have a sense? I mean, I know you spot check and, but what's your, what's your go-to?
So, okay, I understand. So Kelly Bianchi, my um operations coordinator, her and I are in the buildings. Our goal is to be in each building, one of the two of us every single week. On average, it's probably been every other week for the two of us. What we're looking for is the kind of things I was referring to when my answer to Katie was just, does the building look clean? Anyone can find something that's not clean, but anyone who walks into the building will see the same water bottle sitting in the corner that's been there all week. The same glove laying in the corner. First and foremost, I'm worried about the obvious things. Are the bathrooms clean? Is the trash taken out? Are the random items picked up? Then we get into the individual classrooms of what's just the general overall feel of climate. It's not all classrooms are the same. They're not all used the same. Art rooms are a lot different than. Language arts classroom. So trying to get a look at all those spaces and just make sure all the needs are being met. Since Kelly and I have done those walks and started pointing things out to GRBS, they've learned from that and they've started targeting those areas and it's been pretty successful. We meet with them every quarter, including the CEO. Go over our findings, give them our thoughts and they take action, which is appreciated.
Yeah. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll just stay right here.
Stay right there, yeah.
Because next up, we have a discussion about operations purchases.
Yeah, so Director Leiber is going to be talking to you about a um potential mower purchase. And um we, we paused honestly before bringing this to you because. We know we need it, but we also know we've had a lot of operations, things going on in the school year that have caused us to go over our operations budget. So we included an extra um step in your packet for you and the community to show um the payback on this um particular purchase. But uh the board and community know that we've been um. Too reactive in our approach to um. Some of the maintenance issues in our buildings and some of our equipment um turnover. So as Director Leiber shared at our last meeting with our director reports, that replacement cycle will be forthcoming. So the board will see that on an annual basis. And while we have um gone over our, our budget this year for operations. We're gonna have to do something in regards to mowing, whether it's this option or not. So I'll turn it over to you, Brian, to explain more.
So what we're trying to accomplish is to find a way to free up more man-hours without necessarily bringing in more people. That's obviously a pretty big budget hit. The biggest piece of low-hanging fruit I saw initially when I got here was we're still mowing the grass the same way they did in the sixties. Big tractor with the big tow behind mower. Advantage is we already have a tractor. Disadvantage, it's incredibly slow, uses a ton of fuel. We can't put it on a trailer, so Nicholas has to drive it all the way around Ward Cliff, Cornell, all those places. That takes time. Uses a ton of fuel. And in last spring, with the two people I had on mowers full-time, by the time they finished the whole district, they were already late. And starting back over. And that's why the grass always looks long in the spring. This mower will mow at least twice as fast. It will use half the fuel. What took, took him, uh Nicholas thirty-five hours last spring will probably be more in the twenty-hour range. We can put it on a trailer, which means we can move it more quickly. It's purpose-built, unlike a tractor. A tractor is kind of built to be useful at a lot of things, but not really great at anything. This is great for just mowing the grass. So the ROI that you all got was basically showing in two years, we break even on this purchase. The mower, we estimate, will pick up. Anywhere between five hundred and thousand hours a year, which just really depends how we end up using it. But within two years, it'll pay for itself. But the amount of man-hours we get back to spend more time working on the fronts of the buildings, again, the things everybody sees. Those kinds of things is invaluable. So there's lots of other things like this I could bring. I bring this because this is the best bang for our buck. For grounds and probably all of operations right now. This will make a pretty big difference right away.
And this was from a pre-bid website.
Yes.
So it's already a pre-bid.
Yeah.
So we know it's competitive price.
Yep.
Oh sixty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. Yes.
Okay, uh questions?
Not really a question, just a, a comment that I appreciate the forward thinking and the not. Being reactive and being proactive to solving issues going forward. Um I think this is um, it seems like a smart move, so I appreciate moving in that direction.
Thank you. Uh other questions, comments?
I'll just note as well that, you know, we're talking with Director Leiber about prioritizing. There's, there's a lot of work to be done here. As Brian said, there's other things he wants to bring forward, but we're working on. Coming up with a plan that we can share with the board and community. So it's uh a more intentional scope and sequence to when we bring you something. And hopefully not after it's broken, but on a proactive replacement cycle. So. Uh you'll, you can expect to hear more about that um as we move forward a- as well as uh operations budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh next up, we have a discussion move forward about the uh departmental annual reports. Let's continue to get a discussion we started last week.
Yeah, so uh trustees, um thank you for the feedback last week uh to our um. Department leaders. I thought it was a great conversation in regards to setting us up for success with some. Strategic approach to reporting out to the board and community to inform both the board's work. Uh inform the community on how our departments are performing and celebrate the great work that our employees are doing uh within those departments. So tonight, we have the next four for you. And those are uh food service, communication, safety, security and community ed. So we're gonna go through much of the same conversation that we did um last week with the discussion. And we'll bring those four directors up one at a time to get some feedback for, again, what should be in their report and when is the best time to report it out. With that, I'll turn it over to our food service director, Brian Kremkow. Come on up, Brian. And I'll share my screen, so the list is up behind him as well. All right, it's coming up. It's gonna pop out and get that list up behind you so everybody can see it.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
There we go. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Well, so as far as coming up with some things that I wanted to bring to the board, as far as some measurable things that you guys can look at as far as um. How the performance of the food service department is doing and, and. And me being five months into this role. Me learning my role and what also I can bring to you guys and what I can learn is we're all going to do this together. So. Some of the things that I thought were most important were um the state claims and distributions last year versus, versus this year. That's important to me because it's gonna really show that we have. How participation is increasing or decreasing with our meals in the district and as far as um. There is a correlation between free and reduced meal applications, a decline in that when we have these state-funded meals. So I think that's an important benchmark to keep every year. Uh I also wanted to talk about the staffing model used this year versus last year. This year, I think we've had a lot of successes that we haven't had in a few years as far as. How we are servicing students, getting students through the lines, having venues open. But there are obviously our costs to doing those things. And so some of that is staffing. So. We're gonna see some increased costs with staffing this year, but there's a, you know, sidebar of benefits as far as what we're doing for the students on that. So I think measuring as far as the staffing models, what we're looking at previous year, that we're looking at this year, how we are staffed. You know, contract management, OPS employees. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? I think that's really important to demonstrate with you. Uh one of the things that we need to work on as far as points of pride, as far as highlights of what we do. You know, it's, it's hard to toot your own horn sometimes, but that's one of the things, food services, we do a lot of meals. We got a lot of great people. Um we just, you know, finished the spaghetti dinner. You know, we helped raise thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, that night. Got a lot of great people that are dedicated to show up. And work that night. So, you know, doing those kinds of things as far as what we do for the um, the district and as far as for Oakmoss itself. So challenges, um. Just kind of along the lines of as far as equipment and operations, updates and operations. And one of the things that I think I addressed when I first talked to the board, when I came on board, came. Into this position was as far as what your long-term goal is as far as the food service, what we want to do. We want to increase quality of food. We want to, we want to make food that. People are gonna rave about, you know. We're not at that level, but how are we gonna do that? That's not something I can just do and one day I have to build a program. How am I gonna build that program? Staff, the kind of people that I'm hiring, the what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for somebody just to open a bag and do this and take a temperature and do the safe and right things. How are we gonna make things? From scratch? How are we gonna become notable? Okay, so that's. More, I can go on for that, but I'll just back up. Um some areas as far as catering levels, you know, one of the, my goals is to increase some revenue in that area. Not saying that's an easy one to do, but it's a doable one. So getting it out there that we offer these services for meetings, you know, in district. Other groups eventually getting out of district, coming in to join us, doing some catering as far as that. And we have, you know, uh. We do about thirty thousand dollars each year, but that's an area we can improve and bring some more revenue and. And uh covering breakfast as far as the meal served and the lunch meal served. When you guys see those numbers, you would be just amazed as far as what we're, we're, we're putting through. So I think that's an important something we should cover every year. Prices of lunches. And prices of breakfast, as a matter of fact, there. So I want to show some gaps in funding versus costs. So I think what I'm working on is presenting it. Um I come from a background at Michigan State. And how we looked at our students was how much. What's our revenue per student? What's our income per student? Break it down on one person per cost. So you know how much I am getting in. From the state and all of our other agencies for a student, how much am I spending on a meal for a student? I think that's, there's a lot of legwork in that, but I think that's a valuable tool that you guys should know and I should know, too. So we're working on that. Replacement cycle. Just as with facilities, you know, we've got ovens that are, that are old. We've got buildings that are old. We've got infrastructure that's old. Some of that is in the bond as far as work, um like high school, you know, um Cornell, Chippewa. But we still have other facilities that we have to work on as far as some equipment replacement costs and as far as how much life longer do we have in that equipment? Uh let's see. Budget snapshot, just covering on, you know, at the point in time where we are at with our budget, uh over, under, and then. How we're gonna apply that to the next year as far as, okay, so what are we not gonna get in this situation again? Either we're doing great, okay, we're gonna carry it to the next year, set something that's really important. And as far as timeline, what I was thinking this would be, I think it would be good for me just being new into the role. But and examining some numbers in a different way that really haven't kind of probably been looked at before by a previous director. The end of the year is gonna be my best so that I can compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges. Right now, I'm just doing snippets from certain months of the year to this month of the year. So. I think once we get through this cycle and this, this second year of free meals. Um is, is seeing a trend that is just. You would, I just keep waiting for it to, to kind. You would, I just keep waiting for it to, to kind of level off, but it's still not yet. So I think the end of the year is going to be more important. That's going to give me a year to year, um. Look as far as how we're doing with some things. So those are the things I think, you know, would be some good discussion points and some education things. But any questions?
Thank you. Yes, trustee Shasta.
Um, thank you so much. First of all, I didn't realize we did catering. So that's really wonderful. Plus. Uh, that you make thirty thousand in revenue. That's really a pleasant surprise. Uh. I just, I had no idea. Uh, my question is, can we also include besides the challenges? What are possible solutions to those challenges that you're thinking about?
Sure, yeah, anytime is first. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Trusty cups.
Yeah, so you kind of mentioned it and I, and I appreciate you bringing it up this whole, you know, this is something I've talked about for years since I've been on the board is, is trying to get. Fresh foods and, you know, more scratch cooking kind of things. And I don't know, I, I'd love some sort of metric here or some sort of. Report out on that general goal. And I don't, and you'd probably be in a better position than I would. I don't have an answer necessarily. But you know, some sort of kind of, I mean, I think we're all in agreement. We want to move forward on that. How are we doing on that? On that, on that, on that quest, if you will, right? And I understand that doesn't happen, you know, with the, you know, you know. Flip of a coin or whatever, but you know, moving towards that and showing the community how we are moving towards that, I think is, is a valuable data point. That's my only comment. Otherwise, I think it looks really good.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, trustee Kepa.
Thank you. Um, I had the same thing Andy did as one of my points of more info on fresh cooking and. Uh, scratch cooking and healthy options. Um, I would love to see more of that. Uh, and if you can tell us how it's going and how our improvements, you know, what's been improved, I would love that information. And then maybe even more info on catering, like who do we cater to or, you know, not necessarily I need the names, but you know, the groups of. Cause that is really interesting, you know, like how far do we spread this word out to people? Um, and then I, uh, something about communication. So maybe this is like the two departments coming together. Um, but maybe more info to our parents about. Food services in general, like, you know, our kids in elementary school used to get the printed out, uh, menu, and I don't even think they get it printed anymore. But even that was a way of parents to kind of get some more info on it. Because whether you go online and, you know, print it out from there, but maybe a newsletter from. Uh, food services that would have info about catering attached to it, um. And then info on parents being able to opt their kids out of purchasing. Junk, you know, I remember once I found that out that you could really put restrictions on what your kid could hold, could buy.
Yeah.
Um, I think that is, you know, worthy of parents knowing, but I would be interested in maybe hearing. In your report, what kind of communication is going out to families? And if we could increase that, because. I think you like the catering, even within that you could grow it from there.
You know, what I envision is. Uh, one of the things with, for example, allergens. You know, I envisioned this year, I'm going to do like an allergen before school starts, an allergen night. And we'll advertise that. And what we'll do is because there's a lot of questions and we've got a lot of resources out there that people don't know how to use. And it really involves a phone call to my office or an email, and then I direct them how to use that resource. Parents generally know what their allergies are coming into the school year, because I, that's when I get flooded with it. So, you know, doing something along the lines of that as far as, you know, uh, food service welcome night. You know, that would be an invaluable tool that I think would be great for the community. And then along with an allergen night. As far as, okay, here are the resources, here's what we can do for you, you know, and so I think that would streamline a couple things.
Yeah.
I really like that.
I love that. And also with different dietary restrictions too, not just, you know, necessarily allergens, but it was such a diverse community here. Um, I think that'd be great. And I did have one other thing, um. But maybe I can't find, oh, I would be interested in when you were talking budget, how much is from federal funds and how much is from state funds?
Got you.
If we should continue to get better funds. Thank you.
Trusty Burns.
Yeah, so, um, I'm sure one of the big challenges is making sure our kids have enough, enough time to eat. And so I don't know if there's a way to track that, you know, what's the average time a kid spends in line? Or what's the time between the, you know, when the last meal, the last meal is served and when lunch is over or something like that, just to make sure that we're being mindful of that. Okay. I have no idea how feasible that is, but that's just something that popped into my mind.
And it will maybe, yeah, but like doing that three times a year or something. So there's some pulse on it. So.
And like, yeah, and.
Time job.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, right?
No, but. Things that I would use to watch, because I would count from how many minutes from the time they entered the line, the time that they were done, and then that would give me an idea. So it's, that's. Totally doable to say this is what our average is and, you know, do we need to improve, you know, where are we going from there? Sure, I got it. Okay.
Uh, trustee Henn.
I just wanted to say that, um, I saw you at the spaghetti dinner, but I get a chance to say hello because you were so busy running around.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to thank you for all of your effort.
Oh, no problem. I gotta, I get a shirt. I gotta show you guys. I'm sorry. I gotta, so. I wasn't going to do this, but I'm like, oh, spaghetti dinner. So I got, I survived the spaghetti dinner. And it went on for like gangbusters because my staff becomes, it works that night. They get paid, but they volunteer to come. So. You know, that's one of the things that I did do for them was, you know, hey, that's amazing. So I survived the spaghetti dinner.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Trusty Darcy.
Thank you. Um, it kind of along the lines of, uh. Um, trustee Burns' question about, um, timing, um, for students eating. And I know you mentioned about staffing. I know food service staff is an issue, but. And I don't know if it's something you can track, but. I think along the lines of how long it takes kids to eat, I know we, like, they have a short window to eat anyways. And so. Maybe that information can feed into if we have additional staff, we can get more students through the line in a timely manner. Or, and this is not necessarily a question for you, but for superintendent hood, maybe. We look at extending the lunch period again, just, I, I don't know what that would look like. That's a future conversation, but. Kids, they're scarfing down their food to get, or they're wasting food, right? Because they don't have enough time to eat. So something just for a future. Um, discussion, but trustee Burns' question made me think about that.
Okay, yeah, um, trustee Darcy, thanks for that. And, um, I remember when I was in elementary school. My mom and my mom watches these meetings every some time. Um, got a call because I was just throwing out my lunch to go outside. Cause there wasn't enough time to eat. So John, do you read it? And she's like, no, you didn't. I'm like. So, um, so some of those things we can certainly look at and, um, see what the impact of our, our work is. In terms of extending the lunchtime, that is something that could be possible, would have to be negotiated. That doesn't count as instructional time. So we'd have to look at the minutes in the day and see what the impact on that was. If, if we had to go down that route, we'd look at staffing first, of course. Get them through quicker and have more time for them to eat. Uh, but just so people at home know that doesn't count as instructional time. Um, so if you extend that, you could extend the school day.
Uh, trustee Shasta.
Thank you. I just thought about a couple of things. Um, so being a foodie, um. Point of pride made and going with, you know, we're trying to, um, you're trying to cook more from scratch. Can we include some pictures? Cause I think that would be really wonderful to see as a community, all the wonderful things you're cooking. And then second, um, with the waste, is there a way we can also track? How much we are wasting food as a community, as a school community? I don't know. I don't have answer to that, but.
Yeah, we do have some metrics as far as what we track, but we're like what we donate as far as like with purchases, like for spring break coming up here. And things like that. So there's some yearly numbers that I can track for that as far as what we donate back to the community. Because, you know, like milk, I've got to serve milk to the last day, but then we've got another week where there's nobody here. So we, you know, we have to donate some products. So I. I've got some avenues for that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. And that's really wonderful to hear. We're donating. That's already a point of pride, I think.
Yep.
Thank you.
Trustee Darcy.
Yes, uh, just a follow up to superintendent hood. So, and I should have said that. I know that, um. If we were to extend the lunchtime that goes into negotiation. So another option or something to consider is. Um, if we don't extend it, maybe adding additional lunch periods, so splitting up the kids. So again. We have, they have enough time. So when we get the information about the time that it's taking them to get through with the number of staff we have. That's another option to look at in terms of, um, making sure our kids have enough to play. So thank you.
Trusty Henn.
Um, maybe info on what times lunch happens, you know, like I think parents are often shocked when their kids are eating like ten thirty in the morning. Or what, you know, whatever it is. And I know since we've had to add a lunch period at high school, I think it'd be interesting if we.
Okay.
See what those are, just as for community information too.
Uh, I had some of the simple things that I mentioned earlier, so I won't mention those. But one thing I just, if, if maybe this is more like a couple of times a year. But what percent of students bring their own lunch versus eat with you? Um, for some time, what I heard in my home was, oh, it's too long a line. And that was years ago. So. But this does another data point.
Oh, yeah. And that's going to follow right with our trending with our, as far as, you know, our, our enrollment is, of course, what our enrollment is. And then. Uh, participation, the difference would be, you know, who's bringing their lunch and that, so that we should be able to tell that. That's a pretty easy metric on that one.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And next up, we have communications. Shannon's going to come up and talk about our. Communications data points.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
I was paying attention to the food service tab. Here we go. Um, one of our. Big data points I think that we're going to have at the end of the summer is that Nathan and I are going to completely audit. Our website. That means page by page, making sure everything is ADA compliant, making sure all the links work. And then I think we'll just have like a treasure trove of information after that, showing sort of what all has gone into the website and. What pages might need annual brushing and stuff like that. Um, our points of pride, I love hearing that word. I love, it's a buzzword now in the district, but, um, I would like to go back and see. How many, um, individual groups we have honored and, um, it is. Entirely self sustaining. Now Nathan and I don't have to go out and get pictures. The community sends them to us. So I think that's fantastic. Tom, you owe me pictures.
Yes.
Another thing we're going to do over the summer, and I'm frustrated in my, this, a little bit that this hasn't happened yet, but we need a communications plan. We need to know on August first, what we're doing most weeks of the school year all the way until June. Uh, that is not something that we've really had the time and the capabilities to dig into, um, but much like. You hear other organizations, this is transportation week, this is food service week, this is. And really drill down and, and highlight the amazing things that are going on in our district, but in a more prepared. Planned way and a less reactionary way. Uh, number of FOIA's and the time it takes to fill them. I have two open FOIA's right now. So, um. That's not unusual for them to be coming with, on a regular basis. Um, my professional development and Nathan's professional development, if you have any interest in knowing. What we've been doing, I'm taking a crisis communications class through the National School Communicators Organization. It's a six month. Heavy lift, but, um, those sorts of things I think will really help improve my reaction time and our communications in the district. Um, we are rebranding from the Oakness channel to, um. The branding that we're using now, um, that should have better search engine optimization. Um, it gives us more control over the content that's out there and Nathan is keeping track of views. How long a viewer is watching, how many are unique, what parts of the country, the world people are watching from. So there's some great information there. Um. Our positive news coverage that we get every once in a while makes us so excited. I would love to highlight that as well. To show those places where we've gained traction with local media. Um, the work of our digital communication specialist, we're talking graphics, website recordings. Pictures and then all backend work that makes it look so good when he puts it on YouTube. So that's something I would like to look into as well. Um, align our branding across the district, um, helping other departments. Get branded information in front of them so easily use. It is our goal that when you start seeing slideshows here in the board meetings, they will all be branded. And ADA compliant and all those things that they need to be for our community. And then, um, our crisis communications. I don't know if you want me to say more on that or not, but we've had some. Yeah. Oh, and the best time for us would be in the fall to give us the whole summer to, to put these changes and the research into place.
Thank you. Um, questions? Trusty Henn.
Thank you, Shannon. Um, so I had on there some of the website issues like, um. Like I still can't find board recordings, you know, recordings of our. And I don't know if I'm dismissing it, but things like that. Um, but I do really love the new website. So that was on there though, some things that are hard to find or that I don't see there are mixed up.
Yeah, disagree.
But yes, yes, but this was a huge accomplishment to get this up here. Um, I still would love to see a master calendar on the website somewhere. So I don't know if that's really.
All of them.
We're like sports and.
Okay.
Events, just so it's easy for families to get to. So I don't think that's really the report. It's just me telling you. Sorry. Um, and also social media presence.
Thank you for that self check on board level versus administration. Thank you.
Um, that was something that we have been working on. Um, it comes with some complications and some challenges because we're a government entity. We are not allowed to unfriend or delete anything that gets put on. Our site or our social media. We also are required, because we're FOIA-able, to hire an archive service. To, um, maintain all of that in case we do get a FOIA request for information on social media. Um, there are. As you would be imagine, there are several companies who would love to do that for us. So I mean, it's not that there's not the opportunity. It's just. The additional cost.
That's very interesting.
Ghost sites out there too, and trying to pull those in. Um, it is. I think something that with the website and the communications plan. It might have to be a little further down the road unless you give me guidance to do something different. Um, I did meet with the township today and. Talk through some ways that they can help us with their social media in the interim while we work on ours.
Thank you. And it, it just hit it one more thing. Somehow do we have information on how we communicate with parents? Um, and maybe like parents have asked for texting, like can we get texts to have schools closed or in the event of an emergency? And so maybe information on how we are able to communicate with parents.
I would love to do a survey of our families, how they would prefer to get their communication. I've been doing some research into that. But that again will be a financial and something we'll need to talk about closer to time, but, um, I would love to optimize how we're communicating and I. And not hearing, oh, I didn't read your email. I want them to actually lean in and, and know where to find our information. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Burns and then trustee Darcy.
So repeat, uh, what trusty cabinet said about social media strategy and that's part of it, but, uh, also wondering about, uh, just other metrics like. If you do, if we do something with social media, then it would be worth kind of tracking impressions and things like that, along with the YouTube analytics that you mentioned. But I don't know if there's a relatively easy way to track, like what percentage of the emails get opened, like anything like that. If there, you can use like a tracking pixel or.
I have called Bright Arrow and requested that, and that is not a capability that they have that we can use. So I can see if it got delivered. I can't see if they opened it and I can't see how long they interacted with it. So for that, we'll need a different. Resource than what we're using now.
Sure, okay.
Trusty Darcy.
Yeah, so trustee Burns and trustee Kevan, I kind of took a little bit of my thunder, but I'll, I'll, I'll just kind of, you know. Take another step further. I think just in looking at how we communicate with our families and how people. Consume information. I think this whole social media plan is really something we have to consider. Um, I mean, the plan right now, it seems like there is no plan. I mean, I'm not trying.
That it is, um, really doing a lot of investigating and talking to other school districts.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you go around East Lansing, you go to Grand ledge, you go to Lansing City School District. These all have. Pretty active social media presence, I guess. And I guess others are doing it. So I would just, I would encourage, you know, just some. I guess more study into that, just because the, the way people consume information, at least in my experience, it's changed, you know, and. You know, it's, it's less calling on telephones and more social media and, you know, digital, you know, platforms. And I understand it's a fast moving thing. Um, getting back to the reports. Getting back to the reports, though, I agree with what Trusty Burns said, you know, some sort of the, the metric of impressions or views on what we're doing, you know, on those, on those spaces, I think it's helpful to see if that's working, I guess. Thank you.
And in my, my dream world, we have students running our social media and that Nathan and I would approve the posts that they create. That'd be my absolute dream world where I kind of give it to the experts.
I love the, listen, I love the creativity. I'm just looking for, I mean, there, there's no, we don't have telephone operators anymore that job. You know what I mean? Like, you know, because we've moved on, you know what I mean? Like, I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're moving with the times. So, thank you.
Trusty Shrestha.
Thank you. I was also curious, as we start doing this annual report, if we can include how many FOIA's we get, requests we get a year in, along with time and coordination. And not only families opening or not only families using our social media, but I would be curious if you can have a metric, how many students are also interacting with our social media? And do you feel like you can also have a report on your challenges and possible solutions to those challenges?
I can, yes. I was trying not to dwell on the challenges, but I understand that that is overcoming those as a part of, as we grow this position in its second year to really learn from what the last year taught us and do better.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had said a couple of other things. I'm just, thank you so much for this. It's a great, great start and really going to be helpful to our, our work. I imagine a couple of pie charts of like the number of communications types. I mean, some sliver is devoted to snow days. We know that. But like, what are the other, you know, just kind of like, again, not, not getting too in the weeds, but.
What's a newsletter? What's a, a emergency?
You might have a slice someday of the pie, who knows? But you know, like, yeah, whatever there are. And, and to give a sense of that, both kind of topics and type, I guess, there's two in there. And the same thing with FOIA, again, not, not knowing anything, but just kind of wondering about what we might learn from the, the folk, not granular, but you know, pull it up. But what, what are you getting FOIA's about? Is there something we should be doing policy wise to help have less of a hit on your time? So getting pie chart at a high level, if it's two at any given time, I don't know if that maps out to fifty a year or eighty, whatever.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I would just like piggyback on that and say like, I think that it's worth tracking because it's potential budget impact because we have to make a decision about whether we're doing something for free or whether to charge and what to charge and things like that.
Thank you. Trusty, win.
Thank you, Shannon. I think that what you do is really important. And I think sometimes what we are really highlighting is like the PR things that make us feel really good. And like the points of pride that now we're asking all the directors, tell us your points of pride. And that's really awesome. But I think like what is so important about your position is this transparency that we've been really like wanting, like the communities have been wanting, the board, you know, we all want transparency and communication. And I think that's what you've been helping the district have is better transparency and communication. And so I don't know if there's some way kind of relate to maybe what Tom is saying about the types of communications that go out. There is some way for you to just make sure you're giving us a, a good picture of, it's not just all about making Oakhamis look good. PR, it's also about helping provide transparency and communication to parents in ways that maybe we were falling short before. Now we're now meeting those needs better. I think that could be really helpful.
That would be really interesting. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
And we have CD deal up next with safety and security.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. So in line with what everybody else is going over, so here's some of the topics and potential information to include in the administrative annual reports from the safety and security side of it. So I've been with the district about a year and a half now, almost two full school years. So a lot's been going on. So part of the annual report that we foresee in the future regarding safety and security, we have a very robust behavioral threat assessment program. So part of that program is we would like to try and get metrics on the number of cases that we use or that we have every year. That can be broken down into several different ways, but not to get too specific because we don't, I don't think it's a really good idea to, to divulge too information. Because that's a very sensitive topic to everybody in the community and in the district. But we do that in two separate ways. We have our threat assessment, which is broken down to, into our N-TAC threat assessments, and then are also our suicide assessment management system. So we can break that down into the number of cases. Site assessments. So we've had four of those in the, over the last three years. And based off of the site assessments, doing updates on the recommendations and best practices of those. So we can fill in the information on those in the annual reports on what we've done. Safety enhancements, I don't have to go through all of them because we've been going through a lot of safety enhancements, especially since our bond was approved. But just again, reiterating the updates to the safety enhancements and some that we're still continuously working on. And then maybe other goals toward additional safety enhancements. District remapping. So we were able to do our critical incident mapping through our CRG, which is Critical Response Group. So those are constantly changing and being updated yearly based on the new builds of our buildings and our new secure vestibules. So that's just a yearly update to those as well. Equipment, what, what we have now, what we need, how do we get that or how do we get there? We've really worked hard with, in collaboration with our operations department and our finance department about securing equipment for emergency go kits, emergency go buckets. We're working on vape detection, things like that. So another, so that kind of goes in line with our security enhancements. Drills, our drill reporting. So every year, we're mandated by the state to conduct so many drills. They're pretty specific on when those drills occur, how many occur and in what buildings. So that is mandatory reporting to the state every year. I think each school is mandated to do ten drills a year. And then we also add to cardiac response drills that are not mandated by the state, but it's upcoming and it will be mandated by the state, I think, within the next year or two. Trainings, how many, based on safety and security, how many trainings we're conducting throughout the year? And how many people are attending those trainings? So that could be by me giving those trainings or our partners with SEC are, obviously, we always have challenges and successes. So I like to include those into our annual reports as well. That's everything in a nutshell. I'm sure there's more. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think you skipped over crime reporting there too.
Yeah, I did. Yep. So crime reporting, that's another mandated reporting that we have to make to the state on a weekly, monthly and annual report. So that's something that I keep and I keep track of that. And it's also when I say reporting to the state, when a crime occurs on, in our building or on our property, within twenty-four hours of it happening or within twenty-four hours of us getting notification that a crime occurred on our property, we have to present that or report that to the state. There's almost like a Google Doc, but it's a form that you have to go to the state's website. And I, I manage all that. So. Did I skip anything else? I think that's it. Any questions?
Questions from trustees? Trusty Epple.
Sorry. Got a lot. Thanks.
Yeah.
I would be interested to know, similar to how you have equipment on here.
Yeah.
But maybe like personnel, like how many people in each, do we have trained for like mental health first responders or is that what we really call them? Mental health first aid? There's something like that, just so we have an idea of how many people we have trained and where they're at. And I know that there must be a protocol of ensuring that if one of them should retire or leave the district, there's another person who is trained and can take that place. I don't know if there's any way to track, for instance, the number of gun locks that have been given away.
Ooh, that's a good one.
But that would be interesting to know. And hopefully, we have more to give away with funding, if we can use our own funding for that someday. And maybe communications with the family, similar to same thing, like track how many communications go out, what they're, the topics.
Safety communications.
The safety communications.
Right now, I'm partnering with Chief Grillo with Meridian Township, and I'm sure you guys probably get these through our Bright Arrow. But we're doing a collaborated safety newsletter by monthly. Because when it, we get a lot of communications, which is great, but sometimes it can be oh, like too much. And I would hate for people to hit delete, 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 you know? So I talked about doing my own communications, which I, I still am throwing that around. But it's nice to collaborate with, with Chief Grillo. So we've been doing them every other month since the beginning of the year. So we're due for another one in April. And I already have topics and everything ready to go. And I give it to him and.
Well, then it adds more like authority too, when he's signing on too, like I like that.
Yeah. But I do, that's a, that's a really good.
Thank you.
And I wonder if that might overlap a little bit with Shannon's too, because, you know, her type of communications, if it's emergent situation or not. She does a really good job with collaborating with the different departments on what we need to get out there. And she's Johnny on the spot and Shannon on the spot and she helps us out.
Another question, Trusty. Trussa, did you have a?
Thank you for the list. So regarding crime reporting, I was wondering if we can also include what type of crimes? Or it might already include that.
Yeah, yep. So there's the state has defined what kind of crimes they want to know about. So on my spreadsheet in my Excel that I keep, you know, every weekly, well, basically every day, it breaks it down into what type of crime was committed. And I, and when I say what type of crime or when a crime occurs in Oakhamis on one of our properties or in our buildings, it's not necessarily something that our kids do or a parent does. This could be a basketball game and, you know, people from the other school might get into a fistfight out into the parking lot. We still technically have to report that, even though it might not, you know, be directly involved with Oakhamis. Or if something happens at two, two o'clock in the morning, you know, we still have to report those when we know about them or when we're alerted to them. But yes, we do break that down into the types of crime that the state wants to know about.
Yeah.
Trusty Burns.
Yeah, I would second that. And just like, maybe the breakdown can be, you know, things that happen during school hours or like at a, you know, non, at a something like a sporting event versus, versus like something randomly happens on like a Saturday when no one's around and it just happens to happen on district property. The other thing is, so I think, I imagine one of the big challenges with successes is success is often defined by what doesn't happen when we're talking about student safety. And so I don't know how to capture that. And I don't know if that is like, maybe just encouraging you to be creative about like problems that we've had in the past that are not here now or trends that you're aware of that other districts are dealing with that we've been fortunate enough to avoid or just, just a way about something to think about.
I sent some of that same point about students and staff perceived experience of safety as, you know, another thing to possibly look at. Trusty, win.
Yeah, I was just going to say like, perhaps there's like procedures that have been put in place that are new, that is kind of helping with, you know, what Trusty Burns is saying too, is those new procedures is now making it so that, you know, things are safer. So yeah, I see you have like, you know, equipment and these stuff and drills. But I, I think
I agree.
Procedures as well that maybe could.
Yes, 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 we have. And I think it's helped significantly. I think it's also good is the buy-in with the safety. Everybody wants to have safety and security, but when it happens, it's not convenient. And so just getting that buy-in and that perceived safety in the buildings and other properties.
I just had two quick other things. I really appreciate your, your, your sharing with us and the community about how important it is to maintain confidentiality in these things. So I'm going to say this, knowing that you have to bring it up in ways that keep everyone safe and, and, and things confidential. With the BTAs, I think you talked about the different types of them. I don't know if there's an origins, like where, how that got on our radar in the first place, if that's a, that's a meaningful kind of category. But like if it's staff initiated versus student initiated versus parent initiated, is a question. And I think of that as influencing our work, is it both in terms of, you know, our communications to parents and encouraging people to, to, to identify potential threats. And then again, this one is probably a little closer to being problems of confidentiality. But if there are kind of common resolutions to the different BTAs that have been conducted.
Okay.
Question comes from ignorance, because I don't know, you know, but I imagine that in some cases, someone talks to Tom and says, hey, okay. And then, you know, and I get some support at school or weekly check-ins or something, and others take some other directions. So again, at the right level, if there's some sense of the common strategies, yeah, yes, we're learning that whole effort. And then the other thing I had with training is just also like, I'd love to hear your sense of what additional needs there are out there in addition to the training that's been done. And what else do you see people needing support in, in addition to training new staff who come on board? But what else? Not right now, but just as in your annual report.
Okay.
Sorry, one more question. So going back to crime reporting again, do we track what, like how much loss or what it has cost us as a district due to crime?
So part of that reporting to the state is if it's a property crime, then we are required to give a dollar amount for like the replacement or what it costs us to or what the cost of damage was. But other than that, we haven't really tracked anything that would like cost efficient or cost effective or anything like that. And I'm happy to say knock on wood, Oakhamis is trending well with lack of crime.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And last this evening, Christina coming up to share from the Community on Lens. As she walks up, just to prep the board for this, Christine and I talked about the presentation and she, we already know we're going to be reporting out quarterly to the board in terms of the demographics we talked about with those reports. So please keep that in mind as she's presenting this, because those reports where we talked to the board about that we'll be giving like four times a year coming up, some of this information is redundant. So we'll leave it, we'll leave it there. And Christina, welcome.
Thank you. So for the annual report, one of the areas I'd like to be able to share with you guys is our professional development and what we're focusing on from year to year. For example, this year, we were discussing and focusing on areas on active supervision and engagement with children. Anytime we bring on a new employee within ninety days, we're CPR and first aid training them. So kind of being able to give you what our focus is and how many we're training each year. I'd like to go over data trends with you. We go to three data days throughout the year and to be able to show you what our beginning, mid and end year goals and trends were for our classrooms. I want to keep an update and transparent communication with where we are with our enrollment. As you know, we're continuing to grow our program and we've filled most of our spots. We're still working on a spot for our one-year-old classroom and a couple of spots for our infants, but we are well on our way. I want to continue our focus on raising our rating. As you know, currently we're one, but our.
I want to continue our focus on raising our rating. As you know, currently we're one, but our goal is a four or a five. Uh, so keep a focus on that. Want to discuss our upcoming programs with you. Um, for example, this week we're pushing out our summer programming, um, so our parents can start signing up. We're really excited. We're adding that additional classroom. And then we're offering our four-year-old summer program as well. Uh, we always want to focus on our points of pride. Our goal this year was to get more family engagement into our classrooms. So we've had a lot of teachers having, uh, a lot of photos sent to Shannon with, uh, our, our family engagement opportunities. So we've been excited about that. I want to focus on areas of growth, um, challenges that we might be having and then bring to you solutions, uh, on how we can solve those challenges. And then of course, continuing to focus on our budget and getting that deficit so that we don't have that deficit anymore. Uh, best time to be able to share this with, with you would be the end of the year, so we can give you that beginning, mid and end year data trend.
Question, uh, trustee Daxing.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Hood, I know you said there'll be some overlap with our other report, but, um, enrollment update, if we can include, um, any waitlist, uh, information.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. And just one other thing. Oh, um, rates, like over time, just our, like, current, current rates, last time we've increased them, and just include the rates in there. Thank you.
Trustee, when?
Thank you, Christina. Um, as we may make changes or not make changes moving forward, it would be really good, like if we were to like, you know, add more GSRP classrooms, for example, if you could like give us feedback on how those new programs are, are doing, um, I think would be helpful. Um, just as, you know, we add something new, is it, is it working out good or not? I'm not saying we're doing that. I'm just saying, if there's any changes, it's always good to know how those programs are, are working or not working. Um, also in terms of community ed, it would be helpful for me at least if you could like summarize, not today, but in the report, um, kind of like what community ed includes, because I know it includes childcare. I know it includes, um, like summer programming. Are, are there other pieces that it also includes? Sometimes we talk about it includes different sports pieces, but maybe those aren't under you, they're somewhere else. Um, I guess I'm with like a little bit of clarity about what community ed all includes.
Absolutely.
Tracy, first up.
Um, so I was wondering along with the enrollment updates, if we can also include recruitment efforts, what we're doing or, you know, just, just at high level. Um, yes. And then, since we do have GSRP, again, at the high level, just including, um, the goal of GSRP is red kindergarten readiness, right? So how we are doing with the kindergarten's kindergarten readiness data. And as you said, you already have to do, I think GSRP already has to do three data submissions. So just including at the high level.
Yeah, we can also report on, we're working to create a, a better, uh, transition program, um, with our preschool teachers to the kindergarten classroom, so we can help support that transition. So we're working on that model as well, and that's something I can share with you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Trustee helps?
Yeah, just real quick, building on, trustee Wind kind of mentioned it. This is very childcare specific and pre-K specific, which I appreciate. There's an old other side of community ed, which she kind of alluded to, which is kind of the enrichment stuff. Um, and I know a lot of it, you know, I feel, I feel like maybe it was more intensive pre-COVID, you know, we really haven't gotten back there. I mean, there used to be dances. There used to be a lot more sporting opportunities, um, camps, et cetera. And I know we still do some of that. Um, my daughter's coaching volleyball camp here coming up, so I know that's still happening. But just if we could have, you know, maybe some data on how we're doing in that area and because there may be opportunities there for improvement, especially from a revenue perspective. And there's also going to be some opportunities, I think, to maybe, um, you know, community partnerships. I know, for example, the football club is partnered with, you know, community ed and they had a program here not that long ago. So, um, just kind of maybe data on that, um, on the other side of what community dad, dad does more than just what do they do, but actually some metrics and, you know, you know, maybe show some opportunities for growth in the future.
I think that's great. Um, we would have to do that, um, with another part of, uh, the district as I don't oversee those parts anymore.
Yeah. And then it's, and whoever it comes from, to me, that's part of community yet. So, and maybe I'm wrong and that's someplace else, but I think that's an important, that exists someplace.
For sure.
I'd love to report back on how that's working.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Yeah.
Trusty Burns?
Yeah, this is just more of a clarification question of like thinking, you know, further into the future. So is it the idea that there'd be quarterly reports every quarter indefinitely or quarterly reports just for the next year, at which point we might switch to an annual report?
So the quarterly reports were intended for to show that we're, uh, have a sustainable early childhood program. So we would talk to the board about, um, what those trends are showing and if there's a need to continue them. Right now, we're going to do those quarterly until we have the conversation with the board, uh, otherwise, and we can show sustainment of a healthy program for, for some time. So there'll be quarterly until we have the conversation otherwise.
Okay. Yeah, I was hoping it wouldn't be permanent because I know that it's gonna suck up a lot of time.
Yeah, it may not be permanent. We want to be able to show to the board and community if the strategies are working or not and what our next steps are. And then if they are working to make sure it's sustained.
Awesome. Thank you.
Um, I just had a very small thing, just you mentioned, um, the progress toward getting back to the four or five star rating and just as you hit that and each year, telling us kind of when the next evaluation is and this kind of explaining where on the cycle and what needs to be done, that kind of thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And, uh, uh, we are now off of this, uh, agenda topic. I just wanted to thank all the directors for coming out and for sharing and learning with us. It's kind of a new thing. So really appreciate your good thinking that sets us up for a good conversation and, and your good work.
So if I may, just before we move on, we, we do have just a few more that we're going to want to entertain with the board in, um, in April. Uh, the, the ones that are left are ones that present more frequently. So I want to review our curriculum presentation to make sure that that has exactly what, uh, the board is expecting. Uh, we're going to do, um, uh, special ed data to what would you expect to see from special ed? Uh, we'll have HR, some HR data points and, um, finance as well. And Liz is up every, every, every board meeting, but we just want to make sure we entertain those with the same type of approach, uh, to make sure we're not just assuming what was done in the past is what we, we want to do in the future. So that'll be coming up in April as well.
And, and to, do I understand that right then and thinking about, say, finance, for example, like, okay, here's, it's not an annual report. It's on an annual basis. Here's the information you will want to receive.
Over time.
Yes. So kind of thinking about those as.
Yeah.
That's, that's. They know report, knowing that we're reading all these other reports, it's the body of knowledge that will be shared.
Correct.
Over time in some thoughtfully sequence.
Exactly. And the same with curriculum, because you know, you're going to get three of those, at least three of those presentations. So what do you want to see along the board? So make sure we've, we've, we're on the same page with what you expect to see over the course of a year.
Great. Yeah. And Superintendent Hood and I also talked about the board doing a report, um, and which I think would be great for us to report to the community, kind of what we've accomplished, uh, over a given year. That feels like a retreat conversation. So just, that'll be our first topic for retreat will be, uh, uh, looking at what we might put together for an annual report.
Has to clarify question.
Yes.
Yeah. So just in, in, I'm being self-reflective here as, you know, one of the authors of these operating procedures to make sure. I know what the answer is. One of the things we put on here was student culture is something to review on an annual basis. That's one of the items. I guess, have we thought about that and what that will be? Or, you know, was, and I, I don't necessarily have an answer, or is that kind of embedded in everything else? Kind of what's the thinking there?
I think that's a both and. We have the panorama metric we're going to put in place after strategic planning that'll help measure some student culture, um, data. Um, as well as parent, there'll be a parent piece and a staff piece of that. So bigger than student culture, just overall culture and feedback.
Community culture.
Yeah. And, you know, how people are feeling about the schools, the strengths and weaknesses. So that'll be more of, um, something I would report out on, um, in terms of that data gathering, gathering piece. But I do think there's opportunities within some of those other reports to make sure we don't miss data points that might be collected there as well.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not trying to create a whole bunch of extra work. I just want to make sure we hit that data point as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you, uh, trustee.
Am I correct in thinking principals will also, will also be doing annual report or will that be just part of your report?
So we haven't talked about principals coming to do an annual report. Um, certainly we could, um, do that. Um, so I'm open for discussion on what that would look like. What I want to make sure is that, that we're lifting that data to a, to a high district level. And when the district used to do like a, a one, we used to have years ago, the principals come and give a report about their building. And the unintended consequence of that was it turned in over time to a performance. I'm going to bring a group of kids and then the next person, well, I gotta bring a group of kids and a group of teachers. And then it, it turned into what it wasn't intended to do. So I'm open for ideas and strategies the board may have, but what I want to do is make sure we don't turn it into a, a competition. So we're not trying to, um, outdo the last presenter to show want to build culture and togetherness and cohesiveness. And I'd much rather have our principal's report together. And, um, a principal's report, page 12, if we were going to do that, uh, to hit some highlights. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, at this time in, uh, in the meeting, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest that may or may not be part of the evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit comments to three minutes, except when this requirement is waived by the board president during the meeting. A designated tide keeper will communicate to the individual who's addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversation with speakers or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow-up by the board, uh, or superintendent at a later date. Do we have any blue sheets? Do we have anybody online?
Nobody online.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're now moving on to superintendent's reports.
All right, again, good. Again, good evening. Thank you, everyone, uh, for being here. Um, we just met last week, so I'll keep my, um, update short. Uh, a couple of things. First of all, uh, thank you to our teachers and parents for attending parent teacher conferences, um, over the last week. Uh, heard about great turnouts in each of our schools and certainly thankful for the commitment from our teachers to spend another evening into their time connecting with our parents and caregivers. So thank you for all that work. Uh, community ed, uh, Christina has been working on, um, summer programming, but she also has a, um, a draft tuition plan that she shared with me this morning. We'll be, um, getting a memo on that out to the board and then communicating our change in tuition rates out to our community to, um, as one of our strategies to make that program sustainable. Uh, some of the next steps will be following up with our Montessori families and our Montessori enrichment, uh, program and opportunities, uh, for them through the next school year. So they're aware of, uh, of community ed and the approach for Montessori next school year. So, um, as she said, we're doing a great job filling the classroom, still a few open slots, um, to serve summer program listings will go out tomorrow. Uh, and then, um, we have our plan for that, um, blended tuition increase, uh, to help make those programs sustainable. Uh, and, uh, what we left the board with was, um, try to limit the increases where you can, but, um, knowing we have to make those programs sustainable, that, um, some of the lower ratio programs will have, um, slightly larger increases than the other programs, um, because of the nature of the, of the offering. So the board can expect to see that memo from me, um, probably this week and then have that memo go out to families for a July first rate change. Um, Meridian Senior Center. So I've served on a committee at the Meridian Township level, uh, task force to help make a recommendation for a new home for the Meridian Senior Center. And the last meeting of the task force was last Tuesday, and we have made a recommendation to the township board that is twofold. They asked for two recommendations, one, a recommendation for a standalone senior center, and two, a recommendation for a, a senior slash community center. We have, um, decided on a potential location, which would be located behind the Okamis post office and emergency, um, first responder firefighter station off of Okamis Road. So if you're driving north on Okamis Road and you come up to where you turn on, turn right, is that Central Park, Central Park? So it would be off of Central Park, um, back, um, between the fire station and the post office. Um, next steps, uh, and either, either facility would go there. So we've done some programming for what should be in those facilities and, um, our seniors have been very well attending those and giving feedback and asking for feedback from Okamis and what the experience was and how we can help make that a home for the seniors. Next steps are the township's going to take those recommendations and finalize it down to one. Would it be a, a senior center only or a senior center and community center? If it's a senior center only, it will have the option of being built to expand in the future. And then the township will have to decide if they want to bring that forward to put on a ballot, um, for this, uh, this summer or fall to see if the taxpayers will help fund, um, will help fund it. So, uh, the senior center will not be a part of the Okamis schools long-term moving forward. If that ballot initiative fails, of course, we're happy to work with the township, but right now, uh, it's looking like the senior center will have its, uh, a home outside the Okamis schools and we value our seniors and what they add to our district. And I just want to thank them for all the input they provided to me, the feedback and growth, as well as Sherry Wisdom for her leadership over that program for years. So, um, I'll keep you posted on what that, um, what that looks like, um, going on in the future. And then I think that's good for tonight. Is there any other questions of the superintendent? Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Hood. Um, thank you for mentioning the parent teacher conferences. Um, definitely appreciate, um, how we're able to support families with doing the virtual conferences. And I may have brought this up before, but the five minutes, I mean, it really feels like speed dating. And I don't know if there's been conversation to look at extending maybe to 10 minutes. Um, I know that puts more pressure on the teachers, but just want to make sure that that time is really meaningful for our families and our educators while we're talking about our students. So not looking for an answer tonight, but just something to consider and to explore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for the info on the senior center slash community center. I wonder if that's something that the district or the board weighs in on preference. I mean, I feel like a community center would really be beneficial to our students, our families and to showing support for the others. Is that something that we feel comfortable with or not being involved or?
So that's certainly in the board's purview. If you want to, I'll just caution the board and, um, taking a stand on a political action, if it goes to a vote is something the board needs to be careful about. And we have had the township want to reach out to this board to ask for feedback on, um, uh, zoning issues, um, or members of the community that want this board to weigh in on the other board's decision-making on what types of businesses uh, go into our, our, um, our community. So I would just make sure the board has an intentional conversation about the pros and cons of that. It could potentially be a slippery slope and we wouldn't want this board to be seen as micromanaging the township's board or vice versa.
Can I just clarify on that? Are they asking, are they going to get to the point where they'll decide one or the other, or are they going to take that to the voters?
They're going to get to a point to decide one or the other and then take that to the voters for a ballot initiative. Yeah.
Tracy, first up.
So just to clarify again to that, um, so if the township decides, okay, we're just going to do senior, does that mean community ed will fall back on it, on OPS? It's, or it's just community center?
Yeah, not community ed.
So, so, um, there is no community center currently, so there'll be an additional, um, additional fields, courts, um, place for kids to go after school in the evening that where they could be supervised, uh, by township staff. So, um, we kind of do offer a de facto community center with our evening events and, um, so certainly that would fall on us either way. But the, um, Meridian Township, um, senior center would no longer fall under, um, the Okamis schools, the money for it flows through the township anyways, um, but we wouldn't provide the facilities or the oversight, uh, or help, help with some of the management any longer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, uh, we now move on to board reports and requests. Um, I'll start off with one, um, which I'll start off with one, which is last week, we heard about the academic growth days at the high school as a way to meet individual student needs. Another structure that we had was flex. And I know not all students used it for that purpose. But I'm just wondering if you, the last I guess I heard is that we were looking into a possible restoration of it. And, you know, we're at spring break, so I wonder where we are with that.
Be happy to provide an update to you on flex. And I would have Dr. Kemsley come do that. We have a proposal with the union on the table in regards to flex because it is a part of the contract that we're waiting for feedback on. But the flex committee has met, made a proposal. I'll be happy to share that with you in the ward soon.
Thank you. Trustee Doc.
Just thinking about the recent student trips that have come to us for information or for approval. Perhaps we could consider if other board members were in agreement, having like a brief overview, not necessarily like a full blown presentation, but something as a follow up from those field trips, they could perhaps be going the superintendent's report, just some highlights from the trip. Some photos, it's just nice to like, okay, we approve this and now we see the outcome, right? Just a few notes from some of the students, what they gained, what they learned from the trip. Just something to consider. Thank you.
Yeah, so the last two meetings have been very busy. You haven't had a lot of time in board reports. So I have a couple of things. So this is one of these is pretty old. So I attended on, this was February twenty first an MAS B Labor Relations Conference. It was an all day event that they had here at the MSU Executive Training Center. They had a lot of wonderful presentations, just kind of because you've been a lot of updates to Para and a lot of labor relations, legal changes have happened. So I got to hear a lot of really great presentations. Tim Gardner, as some of you know, who works at Tru and gave a wonderful presentation. So I'm happy to share with any trustees or super and the presentations that that we received in the PowerPoints, but a lot of great information. So I just wanted to report back that I did go to that. Also today was DPC. So I went to DPC, it was at Iowa. It was a wonderful event. I always really enjoy going there. I'm sure the trustees feel this way. Sometimes it can feel a little we can feel a little insulated here in the board and kind of, you know, it's great to get down and talk to folks about school stuff. One thing that was brought up, and I told them I would bring back to you superintendent hood was you know, conferences are fresh on people's minds, kind of along with what trustee doxy was saying. There's also a desire and some, you know, kind of question of why haven't we brought at least some form of in person conferences back? Not all in person, but just have that option. Just and, you know, I I I can appreciate, you know, some of the thinking there, especially for our younger families. I mean, there's very few opportunities for them to be in the school and meet their teachers in person. On, you know, to see the school at all, right? So making that connection, I think, has value. So I don't know. And I'm not saying it has to be in conferences. I'm just just in general, I think, you know, there was a desire pretty unanimous from DPC members that you know, it'd be great to have some sort of in person option back. So at least looking into that, or you know, if there's some rationale, why we can't do that, whatever. I did tell them I would bring that back to you, so you do that. And then just the last thing, kind of building on the field trip policy, if we need to look at that policy, you know, from a board perspective to either clarify. Or if we need to look at it to, you know, help set administration up for success and our staff up for success and following the policy, you know, so it's you know, if there's something about it that's come from or, you know, that's really, you know, this portion is really difficult. This is our challenge. I mean, I hope that that feedback, I guess, comes back to us as a board. The point of, you know, some of those policy changes was to be equitable to our students and to provide lower cost field trips and opportunities because we do see the value in these field trips and we want to, you know, as many students as possible deal go on them. So I would just, you know, kind of put that out there that, you know, I mean, certainly from my perspective, I want to make sure we're working with staff so we can, you know, implement this in the way that it was intended. So I apologize. That was long winded, but that's all.
No, thank you, both trustees, doxy and Phelps for those. I'll look into those for you. I do have a letter from MAS B to read just really quickly. MAS B is pleased to acknowledge the accomplishment of at least one of your board members in your district's board for their achievements in two thousand and twenty four. They're very proud of trustee Phelps for receiving his level one certified board member award, level two award of merit and level three award of distinction. So a letter I just got from MAS B today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a few different things. I I think it's fun. We all can highlight as things come up, what we see, teachers are doing and students are doing and bring it up. So I had a couple, actually, Ms. Christine's class, the Red Bud Room here at OPS had a really cool opportunity where their students were able to write a list of questions or write letters to the Prime Minister of Sri Lanka. And she responded, she did like an eighteen minute video. Of it's so cool. Like I got all teary watching. It was just so cool. She answered questions. Things like, do you like being the prime minister? Why did you become the prime minister? Do you like Snoopy? Because she really does like Snoopy.
She said every student's name.
Every student's name. It was incredible. Like, really, it was just so, and it was started a, they were talking about leaders and what it means to be a leader. And a student, a student went home, a third grader went home and was telling her mom about it. And then this student remembered, oh, didn't you go to school with the Prime Minister of Sri Lanka? And it turned into oh, I didn't have my mic on. It turned into that. So it started with this third grader having this idea. Really cool. And then another highlight is the eighth graders at eighth grade Montessori at Chipewa did a sugar camp where Mr. Harper Breeze spearheaded it and all the teachers were participating in it. Where the kids went to Fenner Nature Center for a field trip to learn about maple sugar or maple syrup and the whole process. And then to go further with the whole Montessori way, they went out and tapped trees. And they've been gathering sap for the last few weeks. And then they had a big, they boiled their sap and Saturday morning, they had a fundraiser. They got to spend the night. They camped out Friday night in that big windstorm in the rain. My daughter said she's ready to go on Survivor now because of it. But so then they made their syrup. The next morning they had a pancake breakfast fundraiser for their DC trip. So it was just a really cool experience that they got to do. So I just wanted to highlight those. And then I did want to talk as a group about how we can respond to the Department of Ed changes and destruction and what we want to do if we want to start advocating for it and how we can encourage our families to speak up for education and what our steps are, what we can do.
Absolutely. So to trustee Kevin's question, is this something we can ask our families, our community to call their reps or senators? As because we are nonpartisan, we can absolutely.
But can we can? Yes. Okay. Because that is part of our job is to advocate for public education. And I think we are absolutely in our that's within our our roles here. And we do have a site or we did have a spot on our website where we had, I don't know if it made the transition over advocacy committee work where we could even put up sample letters that they could send. And addresses of where or contact info for local representatives, senators, we can go, you know, bigger to our US level Department of Ed even. So.
Trustee.
Yeah, something I would stress, based maybe for community knowledge or as we're thinking about communications plans is that so last or one of the most recent times that Director Lentz presented on finances, she had mentioned that Okamis doesn't receive a ton of federal funds. But something that I would say is that the state as a whole receives several billion dollars in federal funds. And so if if something happens at the state level, there's going to be an awful lot of pressure for the state to make that up, which will then hurt us downstream because there will be a lot less, a lot less money for for foundation allowances and for all of the other programs that are really important for our district.
Trust you.
Well, also, my understanding is with cuts at the federal level, the state may decide to reallocate their budget in different ways to help support those schools that have received those federal cuts more, which could then also impact our budget. So although not direct, there may be many indirect ways that it ends up impacting us as well.
I guess I wonder if the advocacy committee would again get the ball rolling with a kind of a draft communication that we could be part of a next board meeting discussion. I have had some community members reach out to me also asking what we can do. So I appreciate that.
Shows up on social media where people are asking too. And, you know, I think people just feel so outraged and sort of helpless and like, where do we go from here? And well, I think people want to hear from the from us too, that we're standing up for it and doing something.
Yeah.
Conversations. Okay. No, the one comment I would give is that whatever we do, we keep it student centered and student focused in how it affects Okamis students. I think we would be well served to stay out of the national political drama scene and focus on how are we supporting Okamis students and how is what is happening affecting Okamis students? And that's why we as the Okamis Board are advocating for that. That would be my only advice. You know, we have enough problems here. I can't fight every battle in the world, I guess, what it comes down to. I understand there's a lot of important issues out there. But I want to make sure that what we're doing is is focus on Okamis and Okamis students. So that would be my only input.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I think some families and community members might just need guidance because they want to do something. But they have never done advocacy work and they're looking for guidance. But moving away from that, I just wanted to share or add more to what the student, our high school student had added. The so Okamis did compete at the state level archery and they did very well. They did well enough that all three levels will have qualified for national, high school, middle school and elementary and including two high school students received scholarship. And there were many families, including trustee Phelps and myself, we also volunteered. That was like three standing. We weren't the targets, but it was a really great show of support within the Okamis community. And the students did really well. And I also wanted to give a big shout out to Mr. Kenzie and Mr. Pruden. Thank you.
Trust you win.
Um, I'll add that this weekend, Science Olympia participated in regionals and they got sixth place overall. At least the Kenwa team did. That's what I know about. But all of Science Olympia was at regional. So I wanted to add that too.
I will just say that for strategic planning, I think the survey is open for one more week. The last data point aired was eleven hundred. Have you gotten updates since then? So we had a lot of great participation already, but just if you know anyone who's been putting it off, there's one week left to do that. The executive committee also met with superintendent hood to, we got a lot of input, both from trustees and from community members on participants for the April twenty sixth day, planning day. And the executive met, we kind of boiled it down to forty five slots. And so invitations for that will be going out. We will have a bullpen roster, people who are on the have been nominated. Who did not get an initial invitation. I'm sure we'll dip into that. I imagine we'll dip into that at some point. But just to know that that work is moving forward. And I want to thank people who participated in focus groups and completed surveys. That's going to make our work better.
Did we need correspondence?
Not the last week.
Okay, we are now on to other action items. And we start with the bond energy savings project superintendent. And this is just following up in the presentation from last week.
Did we miss something?
Of following up on the presentation from last week that the board approved the energy savings for the bond. Trustee.
Did we miss something before the bond energy savings project, something about a new hire? Do we need to hear that or take action on that?
So we do have in the board packet, under board reports and court requests, a new hire for Amanda Wenzel. Amanda Wenzel was chosen for a resource room position at Kenwa Middle School. She was formerly at Kenwa Middle School. And is going to be rejoining us. So we're happy to have her rejoin us. She interviewed with administration and a teacher. Amanda is well known. She has a history of displaying strong character, work ethic, passion and enthusiasm for kids. Amanda has been an amazing employee for us and a strong advocate for students. Goes out of her way to provide opportunities to help students obtain the goals in their IUPs. And was known as a great colleague who was collaborative and willing to step in and help out whenever needed. So we are going to be hiring Amanda for that resource room position at Kenwa. The position was vacated by a staff member that went on a leave and we had a long term sub in that position. And are at the point now where we are able to fill that position with a very highly qualified certified teacher that is known to us. So so Amanda will be joining us as a teacher in the Kenwa Resource Room after break.
So back to the Von Energy Status Project. Shoot the motion first and then I'll.
Yes. Yeah, I moved this aboard award, the energy improver projects to train for the amount not to exceed three million, five hundred and five thousand, one hundred and sixty two dollars to be funded through the two thousand and twenty two bond.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Superintendent.
And again, this is just an update on the presentation from last week to hit some energy savings projects. Update HVAC throughout the district as we discussed last week. Part of our two thousand and twenty two bond. Thank you, Okamis community.
I did have one question about just the maintenance support. Does this have a service contract built in? Is there ongoing budget implications? Well, I have Director Lieber answer that one.
There isn't a service contract component in there because we already have a service contract. So it's thirty thousand dollars a year gives us priority. Basically, the reason we have it is so when we do have an issue and we call train, we get them out right away. In the past, when I started, as a matter of fact, we had all these issues and train would never show up and we couldn't figure out why. And then I said, well, because everybody's calling. And if you really need us, you need to have this contract, which a little bit of a gimmick, but it does work. They're always here when we need them every single time.
So it's an extension of the current contract. We'll cover the new.
Days with it. It doesn't change anything.
Thank you. Hey, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. The eyes have it seven oh. Next up, we have the phase curriculum. Can I have a motion, please?
I I motion. I motion that the board adopt the elevated personal health and sexuality curriculum for years by fourth through twelfth grade special education students.
Moved by trustee Shrestha, supported by trustee Doxy. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Eyes have it seven oh. Next up, we have the Spanish student trip. Have a motion, please.
I moved this to the board. I moved the board endorse the OHS Spanish student trip to Costa Rica scheduled for June ninth through June sixteen, twenty twenty six, with the understanding that students will buy by all school policies and procedures while abroad.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. I think we've noted our concern during we've talked about this. So with those in mind, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, it's happened, so no. And then next up, we have the board policy final reading.
I motion that the board waive the thirty day review period, waive the reading and adopt final reading for board policy for one, one, three Michigan Earn Sick Time Act.
Moved by trustee Wynn, supported by trustee Doxy. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. And board policy first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
I moved the board waive the reading and adopt first reading of board policies, forty one oh one nondiscrimination, forty one oh five A pregnancy workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. Fifty one oh two lockers, fifty two thirteen personal protection orders against students. Fifty four oh five title one parent and family engagement policy. Fifty four twenty one work based learning experience, fifty five oh two student government, fifty seven oh seven student wellness policy and fifty eight oh six recording of district meetings.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Doxy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And now we have a discussion item.
Yeah. So Executive Director Lentz is going to come forth and provide some information to the board on our consideration of adopting a section one twenty seven educational assistance plan. This plan really This plan really, uh, is a benefit to our employees who are being reimbursed for their educational expenses under a bargaining unit agreement or through a state reimbursement program. Uh, that money may flow through the district. So Executive Director Lentz is going to talk about, uh, some of the benefits, uh, for our employees, uh, what it means to the district and, um, see if there's questions from the board to see if we might be able to provide this, uh, to our employees.
Yes, thank you. Superintendenthood, um, shared a lot about it, um, gave the background on what it was. So basically this would allow, um, up to five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of, um, educational assistance to be considered tax-free to the employee if the board, if the employer adopts a section one twenty-seven plan. So we have a couple bargaining unit contracts which allow for tuition payments. And in addition, um, last year and this year, there are some tuition, uh, reimbursements through the state that pass through the district. So, um, the state is providing some educational assistance um, to employees, uh, but they're passing that through to the district. So we, we apply and then we reimburse the employees and we get the money from the state. So that allows those payments to become tax-free up to five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So this would be a benefit to our employees. This would go through the end of December of this year, December of twenty twenty-five because this tax credit is, um, goes away at that point in time. In the tax code, it only goes through December thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. So, um, it would be for the rest of this, uh, calendar year.
What would you require from the board? Is there any costs to the district?
There are no costs to the district. What we would require from the board is that you take, um, if you wanted to adopt it, that you take action at our next board meeting in April, uh, and sign the agreement. And then the plan is in place as of the date the board, um, adopts the, um, plan.
Uh, no costs, no downside?
No downside.
Great. In, in theory, it might save, might save us money. Right? Cause then if that's considered income passing through us, then we would be obligated to pay like the employer's share of income taxes or something.
Um, it is, we still have to pay FICA on all these funds. So, uh, we still have that obligation.
Okay, only tax-free for the employee. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Tracy, Tracy.
Oh, I was just wondering about, you said until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So from next year on, will this need to be reviewed? And if yes, or if not, will we, will the staff have to start paying taxes? Am I understanding it correctly?
This is in the federal tax code. So, um, it sunsets on December thirty-first. If the federal tax code gets rewritten and somehow extends this or has a different plan in place, we may bring that back forward to the board for consideration at the time. But the existing plan that you, that will be in front of you, um, is only in place until December thirty-first.
And then second question, not necessarily to you, for you, but for the board. And the policy, I didn't notice anything, uh, where if we pay the, if we do reimbursement, staff will have to stay with OPS for a certain amount of time. Is that like, I know a lot of companies and agencies have that kind of requirement. Have we ever thought about placing something like that in our policy?
So this is a flow-through of money. So it's not, uh, the district like paying for training for a staff member. We have done that in terms of like our Montessori training for our Montessori teachers. We pay for Montessori training. So they get their Montessori certification. And then they have a five-year commitment, uh, to the district, um, at least five years. Or the cost of those trainings are per rated twenty percent a year. If they leave early, that's three, they have to reimburse the district.
Oh.
Yeah.
Tracy, Doxy.
The state funding, is this under the, uh, section twenty-seven K?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then as soon as we, the, we have the funds available to reimburse the employees, but we have not wanted to do that until we had this in place, um, for their benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee Burns.
Uh, just to respond to trustee Shrestha, um, so there, there is sort of an incentive built in. So this happens to be one of the policies that I'm looking to evaluate at work. So, uh, good times. Um, but the, so the funding, it comes in one lump sum to the district. And if the teacher decides to separate from the district, that funding is returned to the state. So that's, that's not guaranteed that the teacher would be able to get it. So there is sort of a built-in incentive because in theory, you can reapply for the money, but that money is no longer earmarked to you, for you. Whereas if you stayed with the district, that money is, is yours held in trust until, uh, you reach, well, in theory, loan forgiveness, assuming that stays around.
So just like to clarify, that is the case for the section twenty, um, seven, um, in the State Aid Act. But we do have other sections in our bargaining unit contracts that do pay for some, um, tuition reimbursement and that has nothing to do with, um, their, um, as, um, Superintendenthood mentioned, there is, um, some requirement for, uh, Montessori training. But other than that, it is, there isn't, there are no requirements for, and staff to stay a certain amount of time.
Trustee.
Just to clarify, this would be if they enrolled, starting like when this goes in next month through December?
No, this, before I make a payment to the employees, this has to be in place. The plan that they've already enrolled, we've already know who is supposed to get what amount, how much they paid. As soon as I make a payment to an employee, hand them a check, it is taxable unless this plan is in place.
Okay. No.
As taxable income.
Yeah. Yeah.
Trustee.
Just was one, this is more of a comment, but, um, so just, uh, comment on like, well done by actually like figuring out how to navigate this particular policy. Um, because a lot of districts were not able to do that when the funding first became available. The state was actually only able to award about ten percent of the funds that were allocated for it. So I think if we, uh, if the district got through and, uh, you know, developed a plan and got the money, I think that that shows a lot of good work to help our teachers and staff.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, um, thank you, Director. At this time in the meeting, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding any items of interest, individual comments. At this time will be limited to three minutes, but may be extended discretion of the board president. Does any timekeeper will communicate to the individual who's addressing the board at three minutes? The board highly values public comment. However, our meeting format does not allow the board to engage in conversation with speakers. Questions or concerns may be assigned to follow-up by the board or the administration later date. Uh, do we have anybody online?
No questions online.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other matters for the good of the cause? Trustee Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I just forgot to mention earlier that, um, protect the pack date is June eleventh. So save the dates, Wednesday, the first Wednesday after school starts.
Thank you for that.
And it, yeah, more information to come. That's the plan.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Great event. Looking forward to it.
More info.
Third annual.
Four.
Fourth. I'm dating myself.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other business, we are adjourned at nine twenty-nine.